Ask Councilman Boone to give the invocation and if you'll please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. My dear Father, Lord, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this town, Lord. We thank you for all the many blessings, Lord, that you've given this town and given this people. Blessed is the Lord as we go through this meeting and have us make the decisions to you based on your will, Lord. Thank you for all you've done. Lead God direct us in all that we do. In your blessed name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Boone. We planned this special call meeting on Monday night. I had hoped to maybe get a resolution that would pass, you know, some of the budget or maybe even a good deal of the budget. And I would just throw a number out there, whether that was 75 or 80 percent of it. But as the week transpired, I don't think that we got to a point necessarily where we could entertain a resolution tonight. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue with these discussions and what we hope to do is come away with instructing staff to make the changes that we discussed in here this afternoon. And then, once they're able to put that on paper and bring it back to us, then we could hopefully be ready to, to adopt all of the budgets. So I've got a little bit of an order here. Counsel, we talked about this Monday night. The first, first topic will be on employee raises. And these are not, these are not related to promotions. These are just raises. And I had incorrectly stated, I merged the 2018 and 2019 budgets together in my discussion. I, I was kinda right on both, but I kinda added them together and I had to get the clerk to give a little research. So last year, what we had done was a one and a half percent across the board for both salary and non-salary and then a one and a half percent of the, of the, of the budget for that department's personnel to go in for merit raises. The previous year, we had not given a 3% raise. We'd given a 2% raise, our budget a 2% raise, and that was in the form of 1% for, across the board and 1% merit raises for salaried and then for non-salaried, it was one and a half percent across the board and half a percent for merit raises. So I talked to Councilman Robinson about this at pretty good length and he and I had agreed to suggest to the council that we go with a, the 3%, you know, put in the, put in the bucket 3% of their total salaries and, and give a 2% across the board raise and give a 1% merit raise and also, but not to exceed 5% merit raise. So I'll just open the floor to discussion on that. Does anybody have any thing they would like to add or discuss or change that proposal? Councilman Robinson, that is, that was, that was the final, what we had settled on making a suggestion, right?
That is correct.
Okay. If I don't hear any discussion, I'm gonna assume you guys are good with that? Okay.
And that was sorta, I think, Jill, what we had discussed in the work session on Monday night, is that right?
It actually was, yeah. It actually was, I believe, what you thought we had discussed. You got good notes on all this, Jill?
What about the part timers? Did y'all decide on that, the regular full-time part timers?
You did, you did bring that up.
Now, we're talking about doing a merit only for that, but, weren't you?
Doing one and a half.
One and a half.
Yeah, for, for part-time, for full-time, part-time. Not, not seasonal part-time.
Right.
Full-time, part-time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't talk about that again, but I, I don't have any problem.
I could agree to that.
Yeah.
And they have to be here a year?
Yeah. Yeah, that was.
They have to be there a year. Well, it basically is just giving, is it just giving that position a one and a half percent raise, though?
Well, if somebody's, I mean, two years ago, it was, if somebody was hired even for a month, they got it.
On part-time? Well, I, I think that all of our raises have been subject to you being here a year before you get a raise.
That's right.
Yeah. You have to be, you're subject to those same restrictions.
Full or part-time?
Yeah, full or part-time.
Right. It's the, I think it's the one-time bonus, may or may not be allowed.
Yeah.
The Christmas bonus.
The Christmas gift.
But that does bring up, we might as well incorporate that into this as well. Yeah, by the same measures that we've been doing that year-end. One-time pay raise, we call it a one-time pay raise. And we've done that for as long as I can remember.
Now, in the past, it's been $20 per month for every month they've been hired for full-timers with a max of $240.
Right.
And then for the part timers, it's been $25 after one year, $50 after two years, $75 after three years with a max of $100.
Yeah. I think that that's worked well. Yeah. Y'all okay with that? Yeah, I don't think we have anybody that would argue with that. Okay. You got that 5% max on the merit?
I do.
Okay.
So 2% across the board, 1% merit, now exceed 5%.
Right.
And then on the full-time part timers, one and a half.
Right. And then the, and then the one-time year-end, the same as it's been. Okay, I got one, you raised the question, Jill, on the community development budget Monday night, and I got a little bit of clarity on that. Everything that you had on that sheet was accurate except for the $50,000 that was in there for the EAC. This is, I'm looking at that big 11 by 17 sheet over in the far right, that Education Advisory Committee. There's 300,000 budgeted impact fees that goes along with the K-1 center debt. So they're good, Councilman Brown followed up with them, they're good with the 300, so we can strike the 50,000. Good with that, counsel? The, I wanted, I have a note here just to make sure that the lodging tax revenue was taken out. And that, that can be discussed during the fiscal year, but I don't think until that ordinance has changed that it should be, be money that's budgeted. So lodging tax income removed, the additional, for the, for the mayor's proposed lodging tax increase.
Is it?
It, I mean, it may have been taken out already.
No, it's, we were just saying we would, it would increase it by whatever.
So are we leaving it at 500 and 550?
Well, you need to leave it at whatever it is at the current rate.
That's, that's what's in there, I think. Yeah. Well, I just remember asking.
Well, we don't, we don't have to get the answer, just.
That's what it was originally.
Yeah. So in other words, you can put in there. Can you take this back?
No, that's.
Okay, thank you.
500 would be the number, I believe. Is that right, Mayor? Is that what you said?
It's 500 and 550. The place jurisdiction, well, inside the city limits, 500.
500 and 550, yes. Correct. Correct. So leave that, the 500 and the 550. So, I'm making some notes here. The way I've, I've seen it, and if you want to make notes of this, I'm giving you all the positives. The, what I believe that we are okay with right now, fully okay with, I'm gonna go through some of these departments, okay? And the general government would be, if you just want, you wanna just jot these down, would be judicial, Nick Center, Fairhook Docs, planning, building, streets. And we're almost there on utilities. I think Councilman Brown's gonna make, maybe there's a small suggestion or two in utilities.
I'll go ahead and discuss that.
All right, yeah, you wanna go ahead and discuss. So what we're gonna talk about, if I'm correct, Councilman Brown, are personnel requests and the capital expenditures. And this will be larger, largely related to general government. I think there's maybe one or two questions in utilities, but it's, they're very, very few. Okay, Councilman Brown, go ahead. You have the floor.
Yeah, so the only, looking through it, cuts, counsel, I would like to recommend, it kinda trickled into utilities. It started out in the facilities and fleet maintenance. And I discussed this when it was proposed. The facilities maintenance was asking for a spray foam trailer. It's 12.5, and you know, it's not a large sum of money, but just being in the building industry and working with these foam subcontractors, they're very finicky piece of equipment, the guns, the hoses, the tanks themselves. I just think it's one of those better things, the city would be better served if we just subcontracted out like we've, we've been doing.
It's just with one job, it would pay for itself. And Lance is the one that said that he could manage that and it would be beneficial to the city. So we definitely would pay for it the first job. And then anything after that is just a bonus.
Training, training for the, I mean, training has to be continued for use of the equipment. I just, there again, I just don't think it's something the city needs to get into. I'm not saying it wouldn't pay for itself, but it's gonna be.
We're just gonna pay more for it.
Mayor, so do we have the qualified people now in the building?
That's why I don't know if, the person would need to speak to this unless you know. Richard.
I will tell you that as far as, we have demo units, but we've also operate, we leased and operate like we spray foam, we did the inside ceiling of the mechanic shop ourselves at just basically the cost of the rental of the equipment and the actual chemical to do it, and it turned out very well. So, I mean, the biggest challenge that we have in, in the, of all the metal buildings that we have that have the insulation that just comes with metal, the building packages that fail, we're taking that insulation down because it has gotten aged and conditionless knots. But if I, you know, again, this is one of those, if that gives all to the council not to keep it in, that's not a make or break.
And let me also say, we, we also, just because we leave it out of the budget now, doesn't mean it couldn't be brought up in a month for consideration. We do that all the time. So if, if I have a council member that has some heartache with that, I would, especially on something that's so, really in the grand scheme of things, it's insignificant, but if it's insignificant, you could say, well, leave it in. But also, you could say, well, take it out and let's consider it at a future date rather than hold up the whole budget process. So my recommendation would be to strike it and then bring up these arguments when we, when we have more time to bring up the arguments and not hold up the budget process.
Is there a specific need, or is there a specific project you're planning on using it for in the immediate future?
It was, and that's why they put it in, is because that project, if I remember correctly, was gonna be, the cost of it was more than the equipment.
Yeah. Yes, I mean, there's, there's multiple buildings that we want to eventually get that maybe we'll have, that are used for prices or whatever, since we like to, we got the, we got the ceiling, the, the, done for that, that helps with leaking, but we'd also like to get walls or when it is weather like this and they close the door, we got a little bit of insulation to it. But again, this is one of those that we can always revisit.
Yeah.
We kinda got the, the, the need, need taken care of and we can look at it if we need.
Yeah.
And that was Lance's reasoning behind the decision.
Correct.
It would at least cover its costs versus paying a subcontractor.
Right. And so Mayor, but, and to your point, what you're, what you're stating is, is that if we only used it for the one job that we know it'll pay for itself, we could go park it on the back 40 and it, and it more than paid for itself.
That was just that one project that was discussed during work session, but, I mean, if, we'd have to bring it to council anyway to get it approved.
That, that, that's why I'm saying, let's kinda move forward and just, maybe we leave it out and move forward.
I would say, just leave it in and move forward, 'cause if you know you're gonna use it in the next six months.
And Lance can do more detail.
And you can always strike it if you don't wanna.
I'll let you talk to some of these foam subcontractors and tell you how much maintenance time they spend on keeping the rig operational. I just don't think it's something the city needs to get into. I mean, I'm not saying it wouldn't pay for itself at one time, but then the guy's gonna be spending all of his time keeping hoses and everything else clean so the use, the rig can be used.
Okay.
Pumping concrete.
Huh?
It's like pumping concrete.
Yeah. But that's just recommendation. What do y'all wanna?
Well, uh.
But that's all I had. Like I said, that kinda trickled into all the utilities, the foam trailer rig, how that, how would that foam rig be used for utilities?
You know, we do an interesting calculation and it's a fair calculation. On, on the compound that is down there at 555 South Sector 3 as well as the mechanics there is considered, they shared the cost and use of that and it gets divided basically a quarter to public works, a quarter to gas, a quarter to electric, a quarter to water and wastewater. So they end up, when anything is used for general facilities, they, they, they carry a good part of note on it. That's just a formulation that, that works and it's just timely being used on those types of things.
All right. So final, final answer. Jimmy, have you given any on that?
Um, yeah, I'm fine with what Robert suggested.
I mean, it's just 12.5 in the facilities maintenance, but it's combined.
12.5 in several.
It's combined 50,000.
It's 50,000.
Okay.
So I'm hearing you strike it.
Yeah.
Reconsider at a later date.
And if you wanna ask, if anybody, that's all I had for utilities, so I don't know if anybody else had any, you wanna ask them? Personnel or whatever.
The only other question that we had once again, and I don't know if IT is here, this was not necessarily to cut it, but just to ask once again, the ER, ESRI server, which was being split among the various utilities and some other branches, what is the, what is the ESRI server again? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you on the front row.
Esri is, is, is the Department of GIS folks, okay? And right now.
Who is?
Esri is how you, they, they refer to themselves.
Oh, Esri, ESRI, okay.
And right now, and I, I'll butcher these numbers, but right now, for example, public work security license, the county has several licenses, utilities has several licenses, and they, they have a program with municipalities where they basically, you get an unlimited access and license for the whole municipality where they pick them out per year. And what we're paying the individual is, is something close, approaching close to what that package costs at our standard. And what it does is it gives full ArcGIS to any person in the city that has a, of course, and another license, it also provides the, and I'm gonna butcher the service and everything else. I know the county does it, I know the city at the after moved into a few years ago until we finally bought enough license where they justified it, and I believe that's what that is. So Esri is the company that provides the owners of the ArcGIS system and all of the new after and things.
Okay. Robert, I think it was you and I that kinda wanted that revisited. Are you okay with all that? That's what I asked.
Yeah.
The.
Smells like cookies. It smells like cookies or something better than that. I definitely smell it.
I smell it.
I, I think that that, Jill, I think that that covers utilities.
Okay. So leave the Esri server in, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'm not hearing any objection. I basically just wanted it revisited for a moment. It's also one of those things that'll eventually come back before us, you know, for, for a Councilman Brown, you wanna keep, continue on with those capital suggestions? I know that.
Yeah.
There was a, there was a very small one there in the, I was trying to start these, back in facilities maintenance. Your, that enclosed cargo trailer you wanted to ask about? I don't have page numbers.
Yeah.
It's about the fourth page back. About the center of the page.
Yeah, there again, it was, it was only $2,000, but just looking at the use of it, I mean, Lance isn't here, so. Counsel, if you look down, like Jack said, it's the fourth sheet back. Probably a little bit more than half, not quite, two-thirds way down, under facilities maintenance, 12-foot enclosed cargo trailer. And the justification was to move AC units that will not fit on the pickup trucks. Of course, that's, the 2,000's a quarter of the cost and three-quarters of utilities. I'm just wondering how often are we moving AC units that won't fit in the back of pickup trucks and can they not get another trailer from utilities when that happens? What? Is anybody?
And, and, I, I, we've got a ton of trucks, but we don't have enclosed trucks that are lockable that can be left on a job site. And I think the description is not as apt as it seems.
Oh, I know that.
Is that if they have, if they're working on a site, it's gonna be a multi-day project that they have not only the, the units in there and all the parts stuck to it, they can lock it and have.
So it wasn't so much the environmental concern as it was the security concern?
That, that was, so they could, they could go to whoever the vendors is, load the, load the equipment, take it to the job site, secure it, and then if they, if they're not finishing for the padlock, only the police do that. We don't have an, an enclosed trailer that's dedicated to keeping tools or equipment or product like that secured. Now, if that was the basis of the request, if, you know, if they're not terribly attentive.
Will you lock the trailer so the trailer can't be hauled off?
That would be the objective.
Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
I'm okay with that justification, too. There was one item that was, it was fairly large, is in the sanitation department, we had asked to leave $335,000 in there as kind of to start escrow and some money, if you will, for lack of a better term, right now, for the automated garbage truck, the lightning loader trash truck and the, well, two of the light, lightning loader trash trucks. And when I'm looking at the big spreadsheet, I see zeros on that instead of 100 and roughly $112,000.
If you go to your individual budget, they are listed on streets and sanitation under purchases, J and A, the transfers to debt service. I mean, they're, they're captured.
The $335,000 is captured there.
I think both of them, the streets and the.
176 in streets and the 194, yeah.
So what, what I have is on each one of the, the streets and sanitation, and I don't know if it's the one you're referring to, but there is a line item that includes that amount going out to debt service for those, for that lose.
That's what that's for, those line?
Like, is that what?
Yeah, it's like 370 total.
Is going on?
What is that one? Streets, 370.
I see a 370 under.
Next sheet?
Street material and landscaping.
Oh, San. But 176 under streets.
Transferred debt service.
194 under sanitation.
That's correct.
And this is, is in.
The new sheet, yeah.
Italics.
Gotcha. Give me a marker on that, a location.
It's about two up from that, uh, three, three 70 number you were looking at.
I mean, I'm still trying to find the page in here. I don't have a page number. Gotta be all over here.
Streets page at the top, which is.
The four utilities?
Towards the back.
Just, just towards the back, thank you.
Towards the back, streets, and then the next page after that is sanitation. So there's, it's probably two-thirds of the way through the. It's about two-thirds of the way down on the page.
The 176, 358?
Yeah, that, and then on the next page is 194.
643.
643.
That's for the current leases that are in place that y'all signed this year.
Okay.
That's the debt payments for those leases for 2020.
So that 370, so it's not included in there?
It's not including, I guess, future payments, no. This is just the 2020 amount.
Right. And so I remember we, I think the discussion going way back on that was that we, if we, we didn't think they would come in, maybe even in the budget year, so they were zeros, but we were trying to plan ahead and not have such a major hit. So we wanted to pull back some money for that in, in event that they did. So we had asked to put $335,000 in expenditures in that, in that department's budget. And Council President and I will again reiterate, one of the things that we had a discuss, had a very involved discussion, and at this point in time, the one thing that I committed to you is, is we have removed the ask for the auto truck, the two trash trucks and the D6 high-drive dozer. What we, what we promised you is that we, we've removed those from the request for the budget, so they're, they're not in play. The other thing that you asked us to do, that at least in the detailed budget for this year, is to show in the actual category of sanitation, the debt service that we're committed to, as well as we did that in the streets. So that's now shown and it's, it's still captured another place in the budget, but it's now shown as a transfer to that other place, so that's there. What, what we're working on right now, after this dust settles, is we're, we're gonna bring you kind of a five-year projection of where we need to go. And, and I will tell you, after we've really gotten down to brass tacks on, on where we are equipment-wise, what's come in, what has, we're still waiting on, and probably the only critical piece of equipment that we probably wanna talk to you maybe at mid-year or, or later in the year, is a trash truck. That's the, the knuckle boom. But by that time, we will have laid out what, what we, what the equipment obligations are going forward and what we think the needs are going forward, and hopefully a plan that we can go through. So, so understand, we are not, we will not be bringing forth to you, if this budget passes, any request to buy any of those four equipments until we have laid out the, the kind of long-range plan for equipment and capital needs of sanitation.
And that'd be based on going either once a week or going twice a week, but possibly increasing the rate?
That's correct. It will, it'll lay out all, we've been, we've been working on it and you know how I like a spreadsheet. We're gonna hopefully have that, but, so that's, I'm not asking for that to be a consideration in this budget. You know, if you wanna go ahead and center one trash truck, I would not get upset about that because that's the one, we, two of our, our frontline trash trucks, one of them is 15 years old and it's, it's little, having some reliability issues. But I don't. Kinda, I'm, I'm really worried about it stacking up on us in, in a future budget.
I think that was, I think that was part of the discussion as well, is it takes so long to get these trucks in, that this truck might not be needed now, but it's gonna be needed in 2021.
That, that's exactly.
And so we need to place the order, and we were thinking, well, if we're gonna place the order, we need to start.
But isn't that dependent on looking at the once or twice a week? That's, that's where we were gonna look at that.
Yeah, but it, but that's, but it's also assuming we, it's also making the assumption that we're gonna go to maybe once a week and that we don't need it. I'd rather have it in the budget and then.
Not ordered.
Than not have it in the budget. I'd rather have it in the budget and then not need it than not have it in the budget and need it.
You know, I'll leave that to your discretion, because here, how I kind of look at it, even though we know that some of this equipment have shown an extremely long lead time to get them physically here, is that if we take our time in the next few months to come up with a plan that y'all are comfortable with and which direction ultimately we're going, those two or three months versus added to 18 months, it just doesn't really change the equation that much. I mean, and that's not, you know, 90 days adding to a process that's already pretty long. It's just not real onerous on our operations. We're in good shape today overall. You know, we still have, we're still waiting on a recycle truck that was ordered a year ago, so...
You're saying we're in good shape? We in good shape on the trash truck?
We're, trash is the only area that we're, there's been quite a few days that only four of the five rolled out of the yard in the morning because one's in the shop. But again, we've been able to manage, and that would, the trash would be the only one. If I come back in 30 days to 90 days from now and say, listen, if there's one piece of equipment that we really could order that would be beneficial, would be to replace the oldest trash truck.
I think we ought to add 155 in, maybe not the 355, but add 155 in.
Fair enough.
I think so, too. And I think when Richard comes back with the, you know, with the list of sheets, you have the five-year plan, we'll be able to plan better now.
Exactly.
And know it's going to be annually to go towards vehicles.
Well, we're way further proactive than we were. I mean, when he came in, everything needed to be replaced.
Thank you.
Got that, Jill? All right, let me, 155,000, you can put it under that, I think it's that Peterson lightning loader trash truck.
That's it.
Okay, Councilman Brown, I'm going to let you go ahead and push forward with the, while we're staying on the capital expenditures. You want to go ahead and move forward with the rest of your thoughts?
Yes, Police Department. Why'd you look up, Chief?
Page one.
I got a question to start with, I guess for Chief or Jill, for Mayor, whoever. On the, on the big sheet that you gave us Monday for purchases, under the Police Department, down that left side column, it appears, and if you go to the small sheet, kind of the one we also work off of, under Police, go to the Police page, one, two, three, four, six page back, and you go down to Police, Purchases Vehicles and Equipment on the small sheet, there's a 429, 423, 2020 revised. You see that, Jill? All right, if you go back to the big sheets for Police, and you add those up, they total 490, 622. If you subtract those bottom three from the Police, the 1,200 new network switches, 10,000 AC units, and the 50,000 for recable the entire PD, you come up with that 429, 423. So my question is, which one are we working on?
Okay.
Or am I reading something wrong?
So the 50470, are you saying each individual, 50470 on the large sheet does not total the column on the individual budget on the revised proposed column?
Correct, yeah, the 50470 and the 50475.
50475 is probably captured in a different...
Yeah, it's the line item underneath that, capital improvement, 61, 200. So if you add up the 50475...
Gotcha, okay.
They should equal the 61, 200.
Yep.
And all the 50470 should equal the 429 and 423.
Gotcha.
Is that answered?
Yep. So looking through the Police capital purchases, I guess, trying to hit the biggest numbers of the new vehicles, you know, is there any way two vehicles this year would work?
The problem I'm worried about is that we still have 10 Crown VIX on, that we are, that are operational, that we're using between, it's 2005 to 2009, are those 10 vehicles.
You have 10?
We have 10 Crown VIX still in service.
You're trying to roll out three or four a year?
And we're trying to roll out four of them.
Chief, when, we have so many police vehicles, you know, I know that within our rules and regulations, officers can take these vehicles home. Is there not a way to reduce the number of police vehicles until we can get totally caught up? Let's say that we did cut two out of this and bought two new ones, and that officers can drive to the station and get in the police vehicle and use them?
You're talking about using a vehicle 24 hours a day?
No, I'm talking about where they come on their shift.
Well, they're, the ones who live outside the 15 miles are doing that now.
Okay, so how many...
That wouldn't reduce the amount of the vehicles we would need.
How many usable and good-conditioned police vehicles do we have?
We currently have 47 vehicles that are assigned to the Police Department. 41 are assigned to officers, so we would have 31. You got 10 Crown VIX, plus we've got the...
We have 31.
Right, then we have also older vehicles that, our Crown VIX start at 2010. Some, not Crown VIX, I'm sorry, our Tahos start at 2010. I don't have that broken down into exactly how many of what year we have.
Let's just go with the 31 number for right now. Let's say we have 41 assigned and we have 10 that need to be replaced. Out of that 31 assigned, how many officers are on duty, including yourself? How many, how many vehicles are being used for police work at a given time?
Let's see.
Yeah, how many officers are on duty?
We have currently about anywhere from six to seven officers per shift. Then you have five investigators, four command staff, and then you've got five SROs.
Five where?
SROs, our school resource officers.
Okay, so that's 20. So there are 11 unused at any time during the day, let's say. And so I ask, how is it that we can't come up with a formula that says that when somebody comes in on their shift, they park at the station, they take their car out on patrol?
Then those vehicles will be run seven days a week, if we do that, which just, I mean, adds the miles and the wear and tear on the vehicle. Because if they're, if they're at the station, they're being used, I mean, every day, if we do it that way.
Yeah.
And they would be ran seven days a week.
I don't know, I feel like, I mean, it just, you know, the Police budget has, it just exploded. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the $700,000 increase to me is a little much, and I just think we need to cut somewhere.
We'll work with the vehicles, I mean, that's, I'm just trying to eliminate the next year of us needing more vehicles because our Crown VIX are given out on us.
So an SRO that goes to work at the high school, they have to have a vehicle. And an SRO that goes to work at the middle school, they have to have a vehicle.
They do. We want March units at those schools.
You want them at the school?
We want the March units at the schools. That's part of their being present and being seen, and their vehicles are out in the parking lot. And they are actually, those vehicles are not being driven all day, so they get the oldest vehicle.
I was going to say, how about the Crown VIX?
Every single one of them are the Crown VIX.
They are the Crown VIX, every time you go out by the school there.
They're in the best Crown VIX that we have right now.
Councilman Brown, you brought it up.
I guess another question is, this equipment's not in there traeger?
The, the equipment inside, the Crown VIX are not. No, because that equipment is so old that we don't even use that, some of our Crown VIX don't even have cameras in them. Now Tahoe to Tahoe, we can use the same equipment, but the Crown VIX are very difficult because the equipment is outdated.
Just below those four vehicles, there's a vehicle called for the investigator.
And we can eliminate that.
It just seems to me that a lot of officers are taking cars home, and we could, we could use them a little bit more if they picked them up at the station. With five to six officers on patrol, if all the others stayed the same, the SROs, which are parked for the most part, the investigators, which are used during weekdays, and then the executive staff are being used every day. You have, like I said, if I just use the number 31, you really have 21 unused at any given time. And if you just take 10 of the bad ones out, you have 11 used. Still seems like you could be rotating, you still have five or six vehicles that are being rotated.
Well, the advantage of having the take-home cars is being able to have that vehicle in different areas at all times. That way, you've got police presence, whether it's in neighborhoods, they can, and then when they're driving to and from, to and from work, they're seen. They can stop, they can, they can still respond.
And I get all that, I do. I mean, I don't disagree with that, but...
And the policy is that 15 miles...
Anything outside of 15 miles, they do not have a take-home car.
Yeah, and that was something that we actually put into place a couple of years ago.
Right.
And, you know, it's been a pretty good amount of time coming up with that and just kind of studying the radius and what would work best. You know, I mean, there are, there are places to cut, in my opinion, when you start looking at, you know, you don't ever want to say somebody doesn't need anything, because I know that everybody that presents something needs it. But priority in spending, but my personal opinion is, I would rather, when you're talking about the Police Department, I would rather give them something that may not be a priority than deny them something and be wrong because of the nature of what they do. It's not a department you want to be wrong in, and I feel the same way about utilities. You know, there are some places that serve a very critical purpose in the city, and I think it would be a mistake to deny something that can otherwise be provided.
Well, I'm just questioning whether or not it can be otherwise provided, because you take the SROs, the, like I said, you take 14 of these out, that maybe are used every day, maybe not driven a lot every day, but being used every single day. And then you have, you have 17 vehicles left, and you have five to six patrolmen at a time. That's three shifts.
If we have a mass incident that occurs here, we're going to need every one of those vehicles. And if we've got more officers than we do have vehicles, then we're going to have issues. If we have an incident that requires everybody to be called to the station, God forbid that happens, and everyone has to get there, and then they get in a vehicle, and we don't have enough vehicles for all of our officers.
Well, you've got also, I was, I was cutting you short, I mean, by 10. There's still 10 of 10 vehicles I didn't even address. You still, you really have 27 unused, and you replace it, if you replace, we're not saying you got none, but if you cut two of these out, you'd still be getting two new ones. You would then have, you know, you might retire two of those Crown VIX, but you've still got, I mean, you still have those vehicles.
Okay, I just, but I do want it to, and to make note that our, our maintenance is going to go up on these Crown VIX, so that part will go up.
I guess I just have a heartache with a $700,000 increase in the budget. I just, it's unfathomable to me. And everybody is reluctant to criticize the police needs for fear of saying, well, what happens if we have this or that? But it's gone up astronomically in the last several years. I don't think it's sustainable, I just don't.
I would, I would argue the counter to that is, though, that our population has grown substantially in that same timeframe, and that it's not a, it's not an unsustainable growth, it's a catching up to the population, and then a leveling off would be my...
The police jurisdiction is the key.
I would argue, Jay, that it was, we've caught up, you know, if you look at the increases over the last two years or three years, that we have caught up, and that the budgets, you know, is outrunning our revenues at a, at about triple the rate.
Well, the fact that we still have police cars in service that don't have cameras on them is a frightening statistic to me, and that is, should not be something that we allow to continue.
Budgets and cameras.
Well, I mean, I don't, you know, that's putting lipstick on a pig, putting a, putting a camera in an outdated vehicle is, that you only intend to replace seems wasteful.
All right, Councilman Brown, you brought that up. What do you want to do with this? You had, you suggested cutting two.
One?
Well, she said you could cut that...
Cut the investigation, yeah. Anybody else?
I'd vote to cut one vehicle and cut the truck. Something's got to go.
Chief, what was the one that you said you could do without the investigator?
The investigator's vehicle.
So, and was that the truck you're talking about, Jack?
Yeah, it's $24,500 there, first page, a little bit past, well, just under the large block.
My recommendation then would be to leave the vehicles, cut the truck.
Any argument with that, Robert?
None.
Okay. Got that, Jill?
Ladies and gentlemen, cut the truck.
Robert, then I had, I saw page three, you had some comments.
Yes, on the big sheets. That's in the city, right, or is that total? On the Civic Center. I meant to walk it, but I did not, I should have with all this rain, get up here and walk it, but, you know, we know the Civic Center is not the most cosmetically appealing building, but there's $45,000 for tile replacement and auditorium and lobby, and $30,000 for some other miscellaneous interior walls and wallpaper removed. Just wondering how necessary that is, and what part of the long-range strategic plan with the Civics Center rather than spending $75,000. Instead of there's a safety issue, I mean, is there tiles? I mean, is there, I don't see anything in the lobby as I walk in about safety. Anybody speak to that?
I'd be comfortable asking Michael to speak to that. I know that they asked for it specifically because there are some safety issues here. I don't know if any of you were at the employee luncheon the other day with some slipping around on some of those tiles. There are some safety issues here that could cause problems for renters. We know that there's a bigger issue in general and that this is an aging facility. And again, we don't have lipstick on a pig, however, we don't want to have, you know, major safety problems for the many renters.
When you say slipping on the tile, like the tile was loose or the, it was...
No, it's more of a, it's more of a very severe tile that we need to kind of step up. But in some cases...
That's just the product.
Yeah, we just need to replace some product that's either aging or not wearing correctly.
Well, unless something is a safety issue... Well, unless something is a safety issue, I would recommend cutting that forty-five thousand VCT floor tile. I mean, VCT gets slippery when it gets wet, that, unfortunately, but newer products, not so. But council, what do y'all thought, your thoughts on that?
Got it.
I mean, yeah, I, I hate to spend money on something that we, we think needs a much, much more.
How much longer?
In-depth overhaul. And then on, a little further down, on stage repairing, I see that it says that, in the note section, it says to budget sixty thousand. We've got seventy thousand budgeted, I don't know why that.
Where was that, Jimmy?
The one that's got all the comment.
Oh, yeah.
Down at the bottom at seventy.
It says to do it correctly, I think you should budget sixty, but we've budgeted seventy. I don't know if there's a reason for that.
The note over on the justification, total of seventy thousand will be needed to complete project at minimal for 2020.
Right, and I'm just reading the comment on the left side. Says, I, I would budget sixty to do it the correct way. Hope this helps, I know it's not what we wanted to hear.
It says, and then is that in addition to the thirty-five thousand approved in 2019 that has not been used? Or is it a total of seventy? Thirty-five plus thirty-five?
Total.
Okay.
Another one was that storeroom, we go back up towards the top below the VCT, interior walls, and you got the storeroom. What is that, fifteen thousand? Is Michael here? Jessica, do you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm gonna ask Michael to come in, because I don't know about.
Well, it's kind of back to, you know, it's, it's kind of back to what Jay's comment was for me earlier. Yeah, I'm sure there are all needs, it's a matter of, you know, priorities. One of the things is, we don't have like a contingency, and we have unbudgeted items come up to us. It seems like every council meeting, and we're asked to approve unbudgeted expenditures. And so if we run our budget all the way up to the maximum we can on projected revenue, we don't leave ourselves any room for, for that. And I know that we, we say we hedge because we don't hire everybody that, for every open position as soon as we do, but that carries over into the next year too, so you could make arguments about that. But a lot, a lot of these things are luxuries, they're not, they, they might be needs, but they're luxuries. Robert, I think you had mentioned also the thirty thousand above that, had you not?
Right.
You had mentioned the forty-five, I had circled the forty-five, thirty, the fifteen right there, the third, fourth, and fifth entries, and then the ten thousand, that's about four more, five more lines down from that, and then the seventy thousand, that was what you had questioned.
Yep. Wish I hadn't gotten there, so.
Well, I just kind of lump it all into one, renovations to, they're all, it's all aesthetics. And, you know, no doubt this place could use a lot of aesthetics, a lot of updating, but.
I, Jack, I just remember, and I'm glad Michael's in here, because I just remember some of this during our budget discussion, that some of these we, we thought might be safety issues, and I want to make sure we're not overlooking those.
Correct, I didn't hear it all because I was in the, in there with Easton Shore, but.
Yeah, come on, come on up, Michael, unless, some of the things that y'all are, that.
Yeah, I'd be a good refresher, yeah.
What, what are we looking at?
The VCT floor tile, the walls and wallpaper.
I, I sent everybody a infrastructure picture attachment. Did anybody by chance open it?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Kind of explains it. Basically, the VCT tile, that's in the auditorium, that's the original tile when they remodeled back in eighty-four. Parts of it are cracking and buckling and starting to pop up, and we can't replace that, they can't replace the tile, there's no match for it. It's been band-aided enough. I've actually filled it in myself, and I'm not a, a floor guy, so we're doing the best we can with it, but it, it is becoming a major issue.
How, how big of an area is that?
It's all over. You can, we can walk over there right now and look at it. I mean, it's everywhere. It, it's not something you definitely trip over right away, but you could stub your toe or trip, or it's, it's causing, I mean, the table leans sometimes when they're sitting up. It really needs to be looked at. I don't think it can be repaired.
Well, I will say this, we, we would have another stab at it later, if it was left in.
Yeah, maybe the thing to do is to leave it in and then, and then just have some discussion about some longer-term.
Or maybe do it in sections.
I think the timing of, you know, are we doing something major overhaul in two years or seven years, or somewhere in between, would, would determine what you would want to spend right now.
We wait ten more years, the Civic Center will be back in style.
That's true.
We still have to put a lot of money into it.
We'll wait ten more years, it'll be back in style.
Come around. Jack, what were some of the other ones that you, you just mentioned?
Okay, so what I had, I had circled there was the, if you look at that, we're on page two, I believe, or, or, or my own. Page three. The third line, that's forty-five thousand, the, the next line, which was thirty, the next line, which was fifteen, and then go down five lines, there was ten thousand. Renovations to Dalechamps number two for an employee break room, that's ten thousand, then the skip two, and then there was the seventy thousand. So we're just revisiting all of those.
I believe they were listed in priority. I don't have it in front of me, so. Is there any other items that you wanted to discuss?
Let him hang on just a second.
It's not a lot.
I just, I would have to look, you know, I guess, yeah, we do get another stab at it, if you just want to pass it and.
It was up to you, you, you brought them up.
I don't remember getting an email, I mean, I possibly did with the, the pictures, but.
Yeah, I understand, I can resend it.
Yeah, I've got it here, Robert, I can forward, I'll forward it to you.
It's a lot of what you don't see in those pictures.
Yeah, and I think it might be probably a good idea at some point for us to, may, maybe when these things are ripe, to come back on the budget or on the agenda to be voted on, that we kind of take a look at exactly, in person, some of these pictures and say, you know, kind of have a, a deeper look at, all right, here's what the issue is. I mean, because I can look at a picture and say, that looks bad, but not understanding, or maybe that doesn't look that bad, but not understanding it in the full context might not do me any good, or it might have more of an impact if I see it in person.
And it's also fair to be able to go review it and not make a decision right now.
Sure.
Right, well, I.
But I don't want to hold the whole budget up again, once again, for stuff like that.
Right, I think everything he's suggesting is probably needed, it's just more of a strategic planning.
Right.
Question, I mean, how, how soon before we want to do something larger scale, and how much money do we want to spend on a band-aid?
And, and that's kind of what I printed out too, when you look at the capital funds, is do we want to continue? Because what, what we're asking for the Civic Center is a tiny, tiny fraction of what it needs. I mean, it's, it needs a lot of work, but we also have to consider, I mean, we've been making do with this space for a long time. We, we need to have a capital spending long-term plan, and I think that will define what we invest in and what we don't, so we know that this is getting ready to happen, and.
I, I think the roof is really the biggest concern of mine right now.
And that's not even a budget.
No, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying, it's like, those are the things that you have to look at this space and determine, you know, how can we do better? It's just been pushed on the back burner for way too long, and a lot of our facilities are like that.
Well, so council, that, I mean, that really, you know, brings us back full circle, you know, and I've heard the roof needs to be, be addressed. But like the K one center, like any structure, if your roof is failing, you've got crap. There's no reason to go in there and spend forty-five thousand for VCT, thirty thousand on other ancillary items, ten thousand for renovating the Dalechamps room, and seventy thousand on the stage. If you're not going to fix a roof and tear the building down, or you don't fix a leak and it leaks on the stage, it just, it doesn't make sense to make these repairs inside until you keep the exterior elements out of your building.
Agreed, but at the same time, we do have a facility that we have to keep up for the people that are paying for it as well. That's, that's my concern.
You kind of have to do both.
And I understand both sides of it completely, but, you know, it's me that they're looking at when they say, well, why, why, you know, the roof's leaking, how come it's not fixed? And it just becomes very challenging sometimes, you know, but I understand both sides.
Councilman?
I've said my piece.
You have a suggestion?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't fund any of it until we, we decide. And then if something is, you know, we review it and, and.
You want to take it out of the budget then?
I'll walk in there after the meeting tomorrow and go see it, I mean, if the.
Yeah, I'll take you up. We'll go up on the roof.
I don't go up on the roof, I'm just talking about the tile, you know.
So what's your recommendation is to leave it in the budget, and then we vote on it later, or take it out of the budget and then add it to?
We can leave it in, take it out, doesn't matter.
And then it'd be an unbudgeted expense in the future.
It'd be more conservative to leave it in there and then scratch it if you, if, after we've had a chance to discuss, rather than to scratch it and add it later.
I think, you know, we, we treat every, every one of these kind of differently. Well, it's better to take, leave it out and put it in, or it's better to leave it in and then take it out, but it, it is, and each one is unique, and I kind of just listening to the feedback, it might be, kind of what I'm hearing, it might be better to leave it in and, and then reconsider it.
Kind of mentally put an asterisk by it?
Yeah.
It's a placeholder and.
Yeah, yeah, none, none of those expenses can be made without coming back before the council.
Right.
Would you be okay with that, that's fine?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, okay. I see camera here from a library. There were, there weren't, there weren't any changes to, I don't know why these went on the list, it wasn't completely exhaustive list. There weren't any changes to the library's budget, other than what we had agreed upon many weeks ago. If you're here for that, I, I hope to put your mind at ease. I just saw that, and also, Mayor, you'd had a question about fire department, and that was going to be left as, as it was with the three hundred and thirty-one in there for the truck. I believe they've agreed to pitch in the two hundred for the truck. I don't believe that they have agreed, they've informed me that they had decided to do that, so. That was, I know something that was lingering, you'd asked me about two or three times, and I, literally, I think I just got a final, final, they were doing some probing and trying to, you know, I think, see if I was gonna budget on it, and I didn't, so. That would be intact as well, Jill. On the, you know, at the Monday's meeting, I don't know if you captured this, Jill, we talked about capital projects. I kind of tried to number these pages, this number twenty-four, twenty-five in the eight and a half by eleven staple stack. We talked about that, those welcome center repairs. My recommendation was to, to postpone those and, or at least strike a lot of that. There was an option, I think, that was at a hundred thousand that I could agree with, but to strike that and divert some funds to K one center. Because there was a zero in K one center. And then we, we'll get another stab at this, but I don't know if y'all think we should make it a hundred, two hundred, just throwing a number out.
Or one fifty, one fifty, was there, one fifty?
I mean, you could do a one fifty, one fifty, we're getting another stab at it anyway, just, you know, something there. Keeping the amount the same and, but splitting it to make sure that we have some money budgeted for K one, whether that be roof repairs or, you know, some, some more things that we, we do need very quickly on that. If, you know, my takeaway was that the bones of the building were in very good shape, we just need to secure.
Secure it.
Anybody have any other thoughts on that? You, I'm hearing a one, one fifty, one fifty?
That's fine.
Jill, you got that? I think that was all, that's all that I had, that we needed to discuss on capital projects. Okay. All right. Robert, you want to discuss personnel requests?
People.
People?
On the big sheet, we got Monday night. And there again, I know, you know, a lot of these are wanted, needed slash, but I've said from day one that I think the expenses are outpacing the revenues in our budget, and that's what concerns me. So that was my, my thought going through the, the personnel increase. You know, and, and general government, we had a six hundred and six thousand dollar increase proposed. So I just started at the top.
That's without benefits.
Right. I recommended we cut the city clerk assistant part-time. Thoughts on that?
Agreed.
Anybody else? I want to revisit these next three, the accountant, accounting assistant, and accounts payable specialist. Are they listed in power, priority?
Council payable specialist is following their Kim, the other two are mine.
I'm sorry, say that again, Jill?
The council payable specialist is Kim's request, and the other two are mine.
All right. So I was gonna recommend cutting one of the three, that would mean, I guess, cutting the accounting assistant.
I'm gonna go ahead and just state for all of these that I think Robert's making recommendations on. I've, I've talked to him for about three hours yesterday. Robert and I met for, I don't know, three or four hours, and so if I, if I sound like I may be blindly going along with some suggestions, it was because these were discussed for about four hours yesterday, so I agree with you on that. Robert?
Yeah, I'm just making recommendations, so anybody else feel free.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just agreeing with your recommendation, you know.
Recommending cutting the citizen support manager. Like I said, I'm sure it would be nice to have, but trying to cut the expenses. Coming down to Civic Center. There again, the facility service coordinator position. I guess my main reason for making that proposal, council, is from 2019, if you take out the capital improvements for 2020, you know, we're losing two hundred and fifty in 2019 to, I guess it's about the same in 2020, but just don't want to increase the, the losses at the Civic Center by adding personnel to it, was my thinking on that.
Yeah, my, my, my thought on the Civic Center is, you know, we stopped using or receiving help from the inmate system to help them with some of the duties around here. And so I, I don't have an answer for why the revenue is like it is, or the lack of revenue is what it is. I don't think we've slowed down around here. So why the money doesn't equal like it should? I would be in favor of keeping that help in the budget, and then if there are peak times or non-peak times, or that person might, can be cross-trained to help in other ways, I think that might be a reasonable alternative. But I, I do know that they have lost the help of inmates around here, and that, that has cost them a lot of manpower. But that's my.
I think that, that move to part-time custodian to full-time, you know, underneath that would, would help fill that need.
Yeah, but that, that only helps with the, with the, with the. Yeah, but that, that only helps with the, with the, with the cleaning, that doesn't help with the event preparation, which is, I think, probably the bigger, not only event preparation, but event management, which I think is probably the more pressing of the needs.
What we're going to do too is with the cleaning, there's a cleaning company that can come in and, and clean for events, and that can be charged to.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we pass that, we pass that cost on, right, to, that event cleaning fee to the event itself.
Not, not always.
No, it comes out of your profit then, if you have to hire someone to clean up?
Actually, what, what I'd like to propose, and I don't know, I mean, I know this can't be done now, but instead of doing all the, the part-time and the full-time, is just to contract it out, have a contract with the service and do it that way. I think it would be a lot easier.
How about the custodial work?
Resources, yes, sir. Of course, every day it needs to be cleaned with a part-time custodian, but if we could do that, and I haven't, I mean, I think the mayor's on board with it. But it needs to be discussed for future. Because it's, it's, it's very hard to keep up with the demand. I mean, all week, you know, we have an event here, let's just say, for instance, this week, and you have a part-time person that's only working three hours a day, well, you gotta let him go, and he can't cover all those needs. So the facility sometimes gets left undone, and you know, again, it's not.
And moving the custodian to full-time is not going to alleviate that a good bit?
Depends, it really does.
I've got a question on, on the, I think the facility service coordinator, and Mayor, I'm not, I'm not making an assessment on what positions out of this entire budget are the most important. But it's the only one that says must over here in the comment section, so. Is that just, I mean, is that the most critical position or?
Is that in yours? What is it called again?
It's the facility service coordinator, it just says must in the note in comments.
Okay, so that's, okay, I thought that for some reason that had.
I'm just, I'm just saying maybe.
We have, currently, we have two full-time staff, myself and Chuck Milan, who took Josh to his position. We have one part-time custodian. The part-time custodian basically covers everyday, everyday cleaning, light duty cleaning, and doesn't cover all this in here. Ja, or Chuck Milan is responsible for parking streets and assisting here with all the daily needs and covering the shifts. If we have an event that lasts seven days, we may have eighty hours in the week that we have to cover and manage. Right now, we're flexing our time with that, so we don't go over into overtime. It's really a challenge to keep up with the demand of the events during the peak time, which is basically now until summer. We have three months where we do all our maintenance. During that time, it's non-stop. Fifty percent of our, over fifty percent of our revenue is for nonprofit, our wave fees. And that, that's just, I mean, it's in black and white.
And that changed some of the, that was one of the things that changed the revenue, because like Mardi Gras associations and things like that, right?
Yes, ma'am, and another consideration too is when we, we're also a multi-use facility, so when we have a, a special meeting, or a special event, or a city-sponsored event, and it takes precedent over any event coming in and renting the facility. And the more we have of those, of course, it's going to push down the revenue of our regular rental, you know, citizens and the public. That's something that, you know, a lot of people don't see on the backend, but it, it, you know, it interferes with that. Whether it's right or wrong, it does, if it's us or if it's them, they still have the right to be here and use it too, but. So sometimes we can't book the facility because of something that's going on here with a city-sponsored event or a city event, so, just something to think about.
Is this number accurate, the thirty thousand? Full-time?
In that grade, yes, sir, it was averaged out, I mean, I don't know if it's.
Do we have, we already have that job description?
Yes, sir.
That, that does exist, right?
Correct.
The only reason I ask that question, because if we have something that's being approved, we need to make sure that if we're going to budget it, we have that job description approved as well. Just some bookkeeping, you know, for, for future. Robert, any, you want to reconsider that?
You said that is an existing position?
Yes.
No, ma'am, it would actually be helping us set up and break down, so when the service does come in to clean, or whoever's cleaning, they are able to actually clean the facility. Because after a fifteen, eighteen-hour day, you can unload a thousand chairs in an hour to get the cleaning service in here to clean.
And one thing is, it's kind of misleading, that job title coordinator, you start thinking of, you know, that kind of sounds like a management position, are they going to be working hands-on? Because, you know, everybody in your department has to, and they have to hump it, don't they?
They do. It's part of it.
Robert, I would ask you to reconsider that.
Call a vote?
Okay.
And then scrap the part, the full-time, part-time to full-time?
No, I'd leave that.
Leave that too?
I'm confused, what'd you say?
There's two different things, you've got a facility coordinator request, you've got moving the custodian from part-time to full-time.
Correct, but I think the discussion that was done beforehand was that, that needs to stay part-time. So we actually have one position that is part-time right now that is filled, so if we could.
That's not the way it's proposed to us though.
No, but that's what we were saying earlier.
That's what this question was, though, to me.
We were saying earlier to leave that at part-time.
Yes, sir.
And then just for the daily cleaning, and then you would sub out.
Yes, sir, correct.
Contract out the actual deep clean.
If it's.
I'm not sold on that contracting out bit yet, because people pay a cleaning fee, and then if we, we're taking that in and having employees clean, I guess, and then if we just contract that out.
What employees are you going to use to do it?
That's what I'm saying, is, I mean.
Nineteen hours a week's not going to keep this building clean.
Michael's not, you know, we didn't hire him to clean, that is just a pass-through fee that the city's not charging it to make money off of it. It's to, so we don't have to have a full-time cleaning.
I know it's not, but the fact is, is that if we do hire, if we do sub out the cleaning, that's going to be another expense, that bottom line for civic center is going to be even more.
Well, you would pass that through to.
It's a pass-through, it's a separate rental.
And actually, we're doing it now, we have to, to stay afloat. We can't.
Are you doing that now?
Yes, sir. And there's no contract, but we are outsourcing our heavy cleaning needs, our floors.
But they're also paid for it too.
It's, it's returned, yes, correct. It's a fifty-dollar an hour cleaning.
When somebody signs a contract with you for ESRT or whatever, you're also having them pay for an outsourced cleaning job, right?
Not directly, but they pay a fifty-dollar hourly fee per hour it takes us to clean, and we base it on the actual time to return the facility back to them as they received it.
And that's what y'all are paying for outsourcing it?
No, sir, because they get it at half rate, because they're nonprofit, nonprofit institutions are going to get it at twenty-five dollars per hour cleanup fee.
But what is it costing you to?
No, I don't think that that can, is that?
Yes.
I thought only the rent was discounted.
That's what it says, fourteen eighty-six, yes, sir.
Well, we can change that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think they should apply to cleaning.
At fourteen eighty-six, it says that, it hadn't been changed. So we, that's the way. No, sir, we didn't.
I believe you, you probably know it better than I do, you live it.
I read it every day, back and forth, so, to make sure it's right, but sometimes, you know, it's confusing.
So you're back to your question, Jimmy.
What, my understanding is, we would leave the facility coordinator in and scrap the move from part-time to full-time on the custodian.
Yes, sir, correct.
So eliminate the ten thousand, three seventy-four. And leave the thirty in, is, is my understanding.
Can you live with that, Robert?
Call a vote?
All right. I'll, as, this is not a resolution, but just to kind of direct the finance director, Jay, what do you, you, you already said you wanted to keep the facility service coordinator in, right?
I do.
What about the part-time?
I'm, I'm okay leaving it part-time.
Okay. Jimmy?
I'm for the facilities coordinator and leaving the custodian part-time.
Okay. I'm the same. Robert, you're for cutting facility coordinator, and then?
Nay and yea.
You're for cutting facility coordinator and allowing it to move to full-time, right?
I agree with Robert, I have a hard time on a lost project to increase, increase the expenses on it, so I agree with Robert.
I'm counting three to two, that leave the coordinator in and, but, but not include the full-time custodian. Okay. All right, continue, Robert.
Golf grounds, I'm recommending cutting the golf grounds and maintenance worker. As far as I know, we hadn't added any, any grounds to maintain, and there again, looking at the trend of losses at the golf course. I know we just renovated and might have been, you know, shorted last year, but it's still increased a couple hundred thousand, so.
I mean, I will tell you that we're doing more than ever now, everything is dependent on, you know, weather as well, but, I mean. They're incredibly busy, they're constantly doing events, and I, I think they're, they're running on a very skeleton staff out there, they really are. And I think most will agree that it's, it looks better than it ever has before, and it's just maintaining that higher level of quality, this is.
The grounds, right?
The grounds, yeah, absolutely. And I mean, Jeff Marks needs help too, I mean, he, he works an unbelievable amount of hours each week, and he's really, his position is not. He's PGA, the title is a PGA pro, but it's, he's really the operation director down there, so it's. They definitely need a lot of help.
I appreciate what everybody does, it looks good out there, but, you know, just to my point, adding, adding people to something that's already losing money just doesn't, doesn't sit right with me.
This, this is a park, it's a service really, more than anything.
But like I said, we haven't added any additional grounds to maintain, I know they might look better than before.
But we do have more players.
But I mean, you need to add people. It's my recommendation.
Anybody have any comments on that? Anybody opposed to that recommendation? I'm hearing cut. All right, Robert, continue.
The temporary to cover Paige's absence, forty-three thousand. I need to be convinced of that, you know, to add a full position, you know, what happens to Paige when she comes back, or where's this person go?
I put the full amount, but it would be temporary.
It's just an overlap.
So that would be a, I mean, it wouldn't be forty-three thousand?
It wouldn't be forty-three, I put that, but we can drop that down.
Yeah, that was the question I had, that seemed.
I mean, it's definitely just to fill in, we don't know how long that's going to be out, and there's no question that we can do without that position and help with all of the events going on.
It would absolutely be a whole lot less money than that.
How do you have somebody that's qualified to move into that position, that, I mean, you know, somebody in that position has so much intimate.
Jessica did it last time she was pregnant.
Yeah, how do you, how do you find somebody that can step in there and do that, and then, and they're only going to be there six months, by the time they're getting up to speed, they're going to be done with the job.
So to speak to that specifically, it's going to be really difficult, and, I mean, Paige is going to be out, we don't know at what point she will go out, or how long she will be gone for. It's going to be incredibly difficult for us, one thing that we really want to be able to do is bring somebody in so they can train with her. Because when she previously went out two years ago, her temp came in, that was me, the day after she had her child, and that made it very difficult for everybody working within this. We have so many events going on from now until, you know, April, May, that it's going to be very difficult. I would say, I mean, I'd say that it'd be great if we had that position full-time all the time, not just temporary, because there is enough going on in this city to justify having someone else in that department to help with it. But it, it's going to be hard to bring somebody in.
But I think that if we could get them in.
Having them come in and.
Now to train.
Exactly, to train with Paige, to try to, I mean, they'll never get as much knowledge as they need, but, but to spend time with her will be very beneficial for us. The overlap is important.
Councilman Brown, I'm, I'm okay with it if it's truly temporary, but I would suggest that number be knocked down to about twenty-two thousand.
Which is probably about what we, I mean, we're thinking.
It just depends on how long she's out, I mean.
It could be less.
Well, you're not going to have Paige's pay.
Right.
So it's not going to be, it shouldn't be more than what, I mean, net.
I think you said that you'd put that in there for a whole year, so if you could cut it to six months, put twenty-two in there. I doubt she'd even stay out that long, but you got some overlap in there. Did you agree with that, Robert?
No.
No? I'm, I'm getting a nod from Jay. You got Jimmy adjusting his tie.
I mean, I'm just trying to, I, I think you definitely need somebody to fill that void, I'm just trying to figure out who and how you hire and place somebody in for that short of a time to step up and do all this, and then where do they go?
I mean, she, she would love to.
You create an assistant for somebody and they go to an assistant position.
It's either that or do nothing.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they.
I'm just saying, you know, a couple people step up.
If they do well, I imagine in that position, then if we have an open position in the city, then they could potentially be. Yeah, auditioning for something full-time, but this position would terminate as soon as.
As soon as she returned, and we were able to put it all together.
Could we have that, we, we would need, we need a description again, it would be a part-time position on that. I'm sorry.
It is.
Full-time, temporary, my bad.
I mean, they don't give benefits.
But we already have the, the job description for the special.
From previous, when Jessica.
Could it be handled with some key personnel that are already here, taking on some of the role, and then hiring some interns to do the, the running around legwork, or is that not realistic?
Well, I mean, as you look at the, the request for personnel, we're kind of at capacity with our personnel, that's why we're all asking. You know, I mean, obviously, we're kind of at capacity, and so to move somebody else that is currently in a role here in the city into that is going to be difficult, yeah. Or else I'll be.
I think we need it, we have too many events.
Work at twenty hours a day.
I think we need it, I just don't want it to morph into another full-time job, that's my caution.
Well, the benefit to that is that you would have to get to vote on it before it became a full-time position.
True, unless they fill, like you said, a vacant position.
Yeah, I mean.
That's, that's up to whomever to fill that position, but I don't want it to morph into a.
The vacant position is already funded.
But I mean, there may be something still open and available when this job comes to conclusion, they can just slide into. If they've already been sort of on a.
We just don't know until we.
Well, my biggest concern is that we get into December in the thick of this, and have an issue where we need someone, and we're not in any position to pull somebody into that. I mean.
And I, and I totally understand that, and, you know, I totally appreciate what Paige does, and that, that's kind of what Jimmy's saying, I think, is. Staff that we currently have probably has more, use the term institutional knowledge about what is about to happen here in the next few months, that they would be the ones kind of filling that role anyway. You know, rather than trying to train somebody for that position, just.
Well, I will say that during our current, all of our events, our staff is at capacity, our public works, who we coordinate with, our police department, they are at capacity. And asking them to do anything extra during that, I feel like is, is disrespectful to what they are currently doing.
All right, Jay, you were nodding. Jimmy, I didn't get a response.
Yeah, I, I think we need the position, I just like you.
I was reduced to twenty-two is what I had done.
Yeah.
Just don't pay for it, it's better. Robert, I know where you stand?
Yeah.
Full-time, temporary.
All right, so I have four to one, reduce that to twenty-two. And I'm going to re, I'm going to rehash all these, Jill.
I'll retract my previous, I'll go along with that, and then we cut the volunteer outreach coordinator, the next one.
Okay, well, I'm not going to hold you to that, because it was still, you got that, but it's, it's reduced to twenty-two without you having to change. But, okay, so your next recommendation is to delete the volunteer and outreach coordinator?
Yes.
Counsel?
Roll this person into doing that as well, have them do both?
I mean, they're. Happy Halloween, so respectfully, I would say that the reason we want a volunteer outreach coordinator is to put them at that welcome center. You know, we've talked about the welcome center, we just cut out our welcome center, you know, budget and, and going in there, but.
but we still have people who go in that welcome center every day, having somebody there, having a presence in the welcome center that is not a volunteer. Currently, the only people who staff that welcome center are volunteers. Sometimes there's, it's not staffed at all, because you... I think, I think you get the, the best out of the volunteers that you have.
Absolutely.
Which is going to more than pay for itself, too, because you have somebody that's on staff that's coordinating with them. In absence of that, you're not getting what you could out of these amazing volunteers that do want to serve.
I...
I mean, I see value in a part-time, I see, see great value in that. I also see value in it for the museum as well, because currently, so today, for instance, we had some issues with, they wanted to go to a training, both of our museum employees. Well, to do that, they have to shut down the museum. There's nobody who can go over and spell them, if you will, for that, or I have to go in, or Paige has to go in. Well, we're full up on our schedule today, so they couldn't go to their training, because there's nobody to go in for them. That's a capacity issue that we have with employment in this particular department.
I, I, I do see benefit in having someone there as a volunteer coordinator. We have wonderful volunteers, and we always have, but volunteer is just that, you're not required to be there, and to have somebody who, who does have some obligation, financial obligation to be there and to help is, is helpful.
How many hours a week would they be there?
Nineteen.
It can't be more than nineteen.
Nineteen.
I mean, well, there's a budget here, and it's a low number, so I didn't know if it was even nineteen, is it?
And, and it may not be, maybe fifteen to nineteen total.
They can't work over nineteen.
I understand, but it, but it's not eight either, is it?
No. They're not going to be sitting in the welcome center all day long. I mean, it's obviously a volunteer for nineteen total.
Okay, so fifteen to nineteen.
And I would imagine it's probably, you know, help organizing volunteers to cover and then be, and then be there when someone cannot...
That's exactly right.
Be there to volunteer.
I mean, we do need kind of a clearinghouse. Currently, Paige really works with those volunteers to get people in there, and so this would at least take that out of her position as well, for having to coordinate that in addition to everything else.
All right, Jimmy?
I mean, I, I see the benefit of at least trying that out for fourteen thousand and seeing if we feel like we get a return on investment for that.
Man, I'm really torn on this, but the one, one thing, I, I, I talked to Jay about this when, when his, and he, you know, his wife having been, you know, had worked for our community affairs department in Fairhope for many years, you know, I think that he had asked her about that, and she had said that she thought that was a need, so based on that discussion, I, I, I don't know who I am to argue with that and argue with you and...
You would be silly.
People in the past, present, future that think that. I would argue with you, Jay, but I don't know.
You would be smart.
Argue with Jessica and someone formerly in a similar position, so. Robert?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Kevin?
I think cut it. Three, two.
Three, two? I, I think it stays. That was a tough one. All right, go ahead, Robert. We're getting to the end. We got to finish up.
Yeah, no, Jay's got to go trick-or-treating.
So is Kevin.
Can you pick a vehicle up before that?
Parks and Rec Maintenance Supervisor.
Comments, counsel?
I mean, we, we are adding more parks. I don't disagree with that. And at some point, that position might be needed, but...
Maybe a year early.
That's kind of my initial thoughts.
Yeah, so let's wait and, wait and see.
Am I seeing any agreement with Robert's recommendation down on that end, that end?
Kevin?
Jill?
I got it.
Catch that?
I got it.
Okay, Robert?
All right. Chief, you mind coming back up again? The administrative assistant position?
Yes, sir. We currently have two administrative assistants in the whole police department. That's Sherry and Tyron, and they are doing everything for patrol, investigations, command staff. They're being stretched from one end to the other, and it would definitely help us tremendously to be able to provide more, to be more active with the community if we had another administrative person. Sherry does a lot of our community events, so she's being split between all of our community stuff and help, providing help to our investigative division.
I had a question mark by that one. Anybody have any?
Any comments, counsel?
And there again, the only reason I was questioning, that was just like Jay was saying, just percentage that police department went up, you know, just trying to...
How many, how many people are in the patrol? You have, how many in that department? Thirty-something?
And patrol total? We're up to seventy employees, and we have, with the three that we just hired, we'll be up to forty-four officers.
Forty-four, and they would be dedicated to the patrol unit?
Yes, and backup with records.
I could leave it. Anybody else? Counsel?
Comments? Leave it, leave.
Robert, what do you, so you, you said you had a question?
That's fine. I'm fine with it.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah. Thanks, G. And the last one was not on here, but it was talked at one point in the streets discussion, did Richard Johnson leave, about a safety coordinator was mentioned during budget.
Safety coordinator, I mean, you even gave me the, we, we definitely need a full-time safety coordinator, and that's the beginning of having other full-time and important departments that, that's needed. The city does not spend hardly any money on safety.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not on this sheet, so that's the reason I was asking.
He's talking about adding it. It's not on here.
Oh, it is on there.
Well, it was not added to this. I apologize, but it is in the numbers, in the...
Yeah, I was going to say, which is...
Oh, it is?
It is in there.
Okay.
Wait a minute now, it's in there, but it's not on the sheet. I mean, how am I supposed to possibly know where it is?
Well, I'm having to, I'm having to go in and, and not only add it in Excel, add it in Munis, too, but it is actually, anything we've discussed is in the bottom line figures. It's just I failed to go in and add it here.
Well, but, I mean, Robert, you, you said streets, but that, but, but any safety coordinator would be a citywide...
That's just where I had the notes, was when we were discussing streets.
I mean, it's a start, but we're going to have more.
Right.
And we have training also.
Sure.
Where's all that shown?
On the safety...
I heard training, and is that training, safety training is included in all of the different departments now?
Yes.
And is the coordinator going to be somebody that, that was, is being proposed as, as wherever it is in the budget that's not a line item?
It's, right now, it's in streets, but, but Mayor, you know, mentioned that it would be paid out of some...
It's, it needs to be spread out over, you know, police utilities and public...
Yes.
Those are the main ones, though.
Yeah, I was saying it would be, it, it would apply to every...
Every.
Yeah, it does. It absolutely does.
Every employee, so therefore every department.
You could almost prorate that based on number of employees in a department.
Yeah.
I mean, that's exactly why we want to do...
Probably should.
We're, we're not doing just, this person's going to start, you know, helping even with videos that are specific to each department, and then they can watch that on their time as they work here, and part of their onboarding. I mean, we're just, it would eventually be, I think, a much bigger presence.
So, so is the position that's in the budget, that's the, the number that's in there, is it a completely new separate position, or is somebody going to be taking on that role that already works for the city?
If you go to, I've got it listed as a separate position.
It's a new, it's a new position.
But it, I think it's under streets, under the salaries line, you'll see fifty thousand on the changes from Mayor, and the note says safety position added. It's about halfway through your budget package.
You said it's under streets?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I see it. That's on page, if I'm miscounting, I got it around nineteen or twenty. So it's, yeah, two-thirds of the way back. And I do see you have those payroll taxes. You have all the retirement expenses.
Yes. This is an additional, this big sheet is an additional add-on that I have to do by hand, so I added it here, but I just didn't go and add it back here, but I will.
Are there any other positions in this stack of paper that are not on the big sheet that we just went through?
No, this one came at the very end, and I...
Well, it, it was in there, we just...
It's a, it's a lot of moving around parts.
Right.
Do y'all, is everybody, is anybody okay leaving that in?
Leaving what, the coordinator?
That safety coordinator.
Yes.
You see the number, and we do understand that you'll go ahead and break that up and spread that among...
I will.
The various departments. It won't be necessarily under streets.
I will, I will.
That also will go into that, for the utilities portion, will go into that for LCA.
And Parks and Recs, too. I mean, there's, again, I think that this person's going to be, it's the beginning of something that we really need to go about.
I don't have any other notes. Robert, did you have any others? Counsel, any other comments?
Can I point out one thing before we get off of the personnel? I don't, I, this has not been an issue...
Oh, yeah, we need to go back over those again, too.
Yeah.
I want to run back through them again, too.
This hasn't been an issue in the past, because we've obviously only had one, one person besides payroll in my department, but last year, when y'all approved that accounting manager, the grade was not increased. Well, city accountant has always been a grade twenty-five, and so when y'all promoted the person that was in there, I, I didn't do my due diligence by going through Personnel Board and having that, that pay grade increased. So I propose that we need to go back to Personnel Board and have the accounting manager either, either make that a twenty-five and make the city accountant a twenty-four, or move the accounting manager into a twenty-six and leave the accountant at the twenty-five, or make, make the accounting man, or the accountant at twenty-four. There's just not, there's not a difference right now, and it needs to be, it's just housekeeping.
For, for the sake of this budget, let, let's leave the numbers in the way they are.
Okay.
Appreciate you bringing that up. Let's maybe take that to the Personnel Board and make, get the recommendation on that. We can always tweak those things.
Okay.
It's a living document, so.
The Auburn study is, is now in full, full swing, so.
Thank you.
Right, that, too. Jill, let me just go back through real quick.
Okay.
Okay, so on the personnel, on the part assistant, part-time, delete. I've, I've got seven different notes in here. On the accounting assistant, delete. On the citizen support manager, delete. On the part-time to full-time custodian, delete. And the golf grounds maintenance worker, delete. On the temporary special events coordinator, reduced to twenty-two K. On the volunteer and outreach coordinator, I'm sorry, that's, keep that in, and then on the Parks and Rec Maintenance Supervisor, delete. That's it.
And I'll add safety coordinator on this sheet, even though I've added to the budget. I'll add it to this sheet.
And if you'll get all those numbers to us, and so that we can, everything balances out, it should be a little bit easier, actually, now. There were some additions, there were a few additions, but there were maybe a little more deletions, so your numbers should be pretty close. Counsel, any other edits that you have? I think that's, I think that's about it.
Was, was the personnel for utilities, is that, it's already done?
We're, we're good.
Okay. I didn't hear that part, so that's...
Yeah, we, we just, we just went over, I was kind of starting at the back of that and said, there's no changes to that. We went over the two or three little changes to utilities, and that was, I think that was it. So, you'll get that to us?
I will.
Let us know.
Is there, is there any way, and this is really poor, because it, it does take time to get those, one time, this Christmas bonus, whatever you want to call it, is there any way we could go ahead and y'all approve that portion tonight, so we could get that into the payroll system and start working on that? It's got to be paid out at a certain time, and it's, it's just, it's very logistical to try to get it in.
Well, look, I mean, you could start working on it right now, and we'll just pass it at the next meeting. You know it's going to happen, so.
Well, it has to be the effective date, I think Nancy said, the, it has to be effective November the fourth for it to be on the November twenty-second payroll. So, it's October thirty-first.
So, when is it normally paid out in November?
I don't think we're ready to write that resolution without our attorney here. I'm, I don't know. I, I think that they're, I think that's pushing it.
Can it do, be like the next one?
It's going to happen.
It can be the next one.
It can be the next one.
By the way, talking about when we would pass this, just based on our normal schedule, and maybe we've already sent out a change in date, but Veterans Day is when we would be scheduled to have our next meeting, but we're not going to have, I guess, the thirteenth.
Okay.
What, what parts of the budget are still...
When we're going to meet?
Do you know?
The what day?
What, what, what parts of the budget are still waiting? What departments?
Is that a Thursday?
Or is this everything?
That's it.
It is? Okay.
Okay, I want to ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move.
Second, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay.
Happy Halloween.
Thank you.